If council members could please take their seats. At our last, at our Monday meeting, we were at Section 5.2.2 before we went into adjournment to reconstitute today. We had one amendment that had failed, and now I'm opening this up to other amendments. Is there anybody who'd like to make another amendment?
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chase.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Monday, an initial amendment that we offered did go down, and we've taken a look at, in the spirit of compromise, we've taken a look at the budget amendment proposed by Mr. Khan and the other sponsors.
Mr. Chase?
As a result, yes?
May I interrupt? There has been no other amendment proposed. So, are you introducing an amendment currently?
Yep, I am introducing an amendment, and as I said, we looked at some proposals that were made by Mr. Khan, and we tried to incorporate some of those with us. The amendment that I'm offering is an ordinance adopting annual operating budget for the town in Stratford for fiscal year July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018, to decrease the appropriation by $898,935, and to increase revenues by $235,000. This change is recommended by council members Del Ponte, Chase, Harden, and Llewellyn. The mill rate as a result of this change will decrease from the mayor's proposal 2.5 mills.
By 2.5 mill, by 0.25 mill?
By 0.25 mills. Expenditures are: Town Clerk's Office payroll, part-time, $40,000; Town Attorney, regular payroll, $72,936; Chief Administrative Officer, $2,000; Planning and zoning education, $31,500; planning and zoning outside services, $44,000; contingency anticipated expenses, an increase of $25,000; employee health benefits, $136,000.
I'm sorry, can you tell us if those are increases or decreases? So, my understanding is the first five were decreases?
Okay, the first five are decreases, then we go down to contingency, that's a $25,000 increase. Decrease employee benefit, self-help is $136,000; Tax Collector's Office, a decrease of $33,000; Community, Visiting Nurses Association, community grant, a decrease of $53,500; Recreation Department payroll, other, $20,000. That is one that we looked at, the proposal that wasn't offered, and decided that that was probably reasonable. Town Garage Heating Oil, $7,000; Fire Administration, a decrease of $9,000; Board of Education, Teachers Retirement, a decrease of $902,181; and Board of Education Budget, this is an increase of $427,182, for a balance decrease of $898,935. On the revenue side, General Fund, Cell Tower Rental, $40,000; Conveyance Tax, that's an increase of $20,000, that is a change. The Finance Director was requested to take another look at the conveyance tax, since there appear to be more sales in town, and he's determined that there's probably an additional $20,000 that will come in, in the next fiscal year. Fire Department, $20,000; General Fund, Railroad Fund, $130,000; and General Fund Building Lease, $25,000, for a total revenue increase of $235,000. I move its adoption.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion, Mr. Harden?
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, thank you. In discussion, Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Madam Chairman, as I indicated earlier, we did try to review what Mr. Khan had put together, and in our discussions, we took a look at, we took a look at some of the changes that he was proposing, and they're under, they could be under consideration if he brings these forth, but there were a number of questions that needed to be raised, and I'm just going to go through a few of these, and maybe Mr. Khan, or someone from the administration can help us out here. One area that comes up is the area of Human Resources. There's a $3,000 proposed cut, I'll go by department, I guess, and Human Resources, there's another cut for recruitment of 40,000, and Human Resources, Legal, Collective Bargaining, $60,000. Now, in looking at these, analyzing these, we wondered...
Point of clarification, I'm confused, we're talking about one amendment right now, right?
We are talking about one amendment, I believe Mr. Chase was discussing why these things, these other aspects were not included in the amendment, so this is appropriate.
Yeah, the, under education, it's our understanding that that $3,000 is a contractual obligation, and so we're not sure how you can violate a contract between an employer and employee. Under employee recruitment, that $40,000 covers drug testing for new firemen, policemen, other town employees, advertising for recruitment, medical exams, a number of our employees have requirements for medical exams, and it looks like the 40,000 just isn't going to work. Under Legal Expenses, Collective Bargaining, 60,000, that was kind of an eye-opener. We had thought that there were contract negotiations still in progress, and as it turns out, there are, there are four open contracts, so you, I just don't see how you can just say, "Well, we're going to reduce that by $60,000." In terms of the Chief Administrative Office, I'm sorry, the Town Attorney's Office...
Mr. Chase?
Yes, ma'am.
The mayor is offering for Ron Eng to inform us to answer that question?
Sounds good, I'll find Mr. Eng.
Mr. Eng?
Can you step forward?
And perhaps if you'd like the questions answered that way, we could have the administration answer these questions, to the extent to which they're reasonable and should be considered in this budget amendment also.
Mr. Khan, I'm looking at...
Mr. Eng.
Mr. Eng, I'm looking at your Human Resources cuts. Education, $3,000; Employee Recruitment, $40,000; Legal Expense, Collective Bargaining, $60,000.
To address the education, as you mentioned, we do have employment agreements that are signed off by the mayor to the employees that say, "You're entitled to tuition reimbursement," so we have to budget for that, because I can't tell you whether someone will or will not use it. If they don't use it, obviously, then that gets, that money gets re-appropriate elsewhere, where we may be over-budget for whatever reason. So, we have to plan on budgeting that, because if I, if someone does use their education, and we don't have the money there, we can't deny them the education, because it's part of their agreement. You can't deny them that right to get further education. If they don't use it, then again, like I said, it gets re-appropriate to somewhere else that their funds can go to, to compensate any over expenditures. As far as the pre-employment, or the employment recruitment, as you mentioned, there were a lot of things that get involved, the physicals, background checks, drug screens, placement of ads. Just for an example, I know, you know, last year's budget, we were at $64,000, but I just got in today, a, about another $16,000 to $17,000 worth of 216 fiscal year bills from St. Vincent's, which, if you add it to the $65,000 that we had, that's on the books right now, that we see visible, that brings it up close, over to $80,000. So, it's very hard to go by just what the actuals were from that particular year, because we still get things flowing in. So, and right now, just for an example, we have $45,000 so far spent this fiscal year on pre-employment ads and so forth. So, my budget for $90,000 is already halfway met, and I'm still haven't gotten the full year's worth of invoices, and we still have two months left, plus, I don't have all the invoices from the past three months. As far as the contract settlements that you brought up, again, as you mentioned, there is one contract, one union that we have, it's going on almost two years now, and then we have three other contracts that expire June 30th. So, we have to plan on contract settlements to account for what the potential settlements will be. And it's been pretty accurate, if you look at the contract settlements for the previous years, they've gone up every year. It went from 214, from 401,000, and 15, it went to 725. For fiscal year 16, it went to 1.4 million. So, we have to plan for those future contracts to be negotiated. When I have four of them total, it's not, you know, $1,000 or $100,000, it gets into the million-dollar ranges very quickly. So, again, we have to properly forecast that to accommodate, again, potential raises, because again, they also get retro pay, not just for that year that the contract's done. If it's a two-year-old contract, they get two years' worth of retro pay for all the earnings that they have for those two years. So, again, it amortizes that over there, you have to include that in your future contract settlements.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chase, is that sufficient?
Yeah.
Response on the Human Resources, so, okay?
Mr. Eng, as long as you're up there, there's also suggestions, maybe increasing the...
Can you use your microphone, please?
I'm sorry, increasing the Health Self-Health Line, we're calling for 136, and we want, I would like to determine whether we can, in fact, cut that more.
Well, again, that was based on just last week's renegotiations with Anthem. We did receive a $136,000 reduction in the cost for their health benefits. One thing everybody has to understand, we are self-insured, therefore, we have to pay for all those medical bills, it's not the insurance company paying that, it's the town. So, to take another $89,000 from that would be basically detrimental to the fund. And it also doesn't account for, you get critical claims, which, we have had six of them to date, that are over a million dollars. So, if we short-change us that way, we'll, again, we'll be under budget, and it will be, you know, not very smart budgeting to do that again.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to jump over to the Fire Department, if the Fire Marshal is available?
Is the Fire Marshal available? Oh, okay, thank you.
I'm also available, Fire Chief.
Sorry, Chief.
Thank you, Chief McGrath.
I'm curious to know, would you give me some information why you want to go to a full-time secretary in that office?
First and foremost, this was a full-time position that we had since last year, we just had to go out and find the proper person, through testing and so forth, and interviews. In that matter, we are responsible by state law to inspect annually approximately 1,500-plus occupancies in the town of Stratford, including nursing homes, homes for the elderly, schools, multiple families, over three families and above, and, you know, commercial and industrial occupancies. With the staffing we have now, it's very difficult to even come close to that. So, the secretary has been able to improve the efficiency in a department by sending out bills, and setting up the appointments and reappointments, you know, once we go out to inspect, and we find some problems there, we have to, you know, set up appointments for re-inspection. And Brian, I'll let Brian speak a little bit on that.
Good evening. We've had a full-time secretary since January, it was budgeted for the past two years, but we held off on that. So, we had a part-timer, we put in for the full-timer, which we received, we finally filled that position. With that position, like the chief was saying, she's responsible for all the scheduling, the billing, and she's not only a greeter, but she, this is a public service department, where the public is coming in on a daily basis. For today, just for today, we had eight visitors into the office, and about two dozen phone calls that she personally answered while we were not in the office. So, without that secretary assistant in that office, those are unanswered calls, that is revenue being lost.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chase, I just want to say that if it's okay with you, the mayor would also like to respond to that question?
I'll...
If that's okay.
Mayor?
Yeah, that's fine. First of all, I see we have a number of firefighters here this evening, thank you for joining us at the meeting, and coming across the street, Chief McGrath, Fire Marshal Lampert, thank you. But let me just tell you about what the department was when I first got here. Equipment wasn't working, we're woefully inadequate as far as, not only trucks, but outer gear, morale was down. We've turned a corner so much with our fire department. If it's not broke, don't fix it, and if anything, we're getting better. So, we're not just satisfied staying status quo, we've exceeded it with the ISO rating too, which was a big deal, but it includes a lot of things, from communications, to equipment, to training. I mean, our fire department trains all the time now, and thank you for doing that and keeping the residents of Stratford safe. It's an investment worthwhile having, we invested in it before, and we weren't getting the benefits of having a great department. We have a great department right now, probably one of the best in the state of Connecticut. And by trying to cut things right now, when they've reached a plateau, is really a knock to our fire department, and to the citizens. And, you know, if we lose the ISO rating, if it goes the other way, by chipping away at their budget, that means homeowners may end up with higher rates in their insurance. Chief, is that true?
That's true, that's true.
So, the proposed budget that we put before you, not only, if it keeps everyone whole, including the fire department, but if something happens to the fire department, where we lose that ISO rating, you're double penalizing the residents of Stratford. You're not giving them the services they deserve, but more importantly, they're losing that benefit in their insurance premiums. Why would you do that? So, I would encourage this council to support the budget before you, but I just wanted to give everyone an update as far as what's going on in the fire department. Chief McGrath, thank you for your service and your commitment to our residents here in Stratford.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Okay, Mr. Chase, did you have other considerations that were not taken into account in the amendment?
Yes, thank you. We also looked at reducing the overtime for the Fire Marshal's office. What is the overtime used for?
Basically, for investigating fires, or, you know, callbacks for situations where they need to be there for, whether it's an investigation, any other outside activities is normally paid for by the citizens.
Well, let me ask you a question, if there's a fire at 2:00 in the morning, is the Fire Marshal required to be there?
Yes.
Okay, so that's where the overtime would come in?
Yes.
Is that a contractual arrangement between the union and the town?
It's also a state law.
And it's a state law?
Yeah. All fires have to be investigated.
Well, I understood that, but is this overtime requirement in your contract?
If it's after hours, it's in the contract to pay overtime, but if there's a fire during the day, then we have people on duty.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I, just a few more, if you will, Madam Chairman.
But not for the fire department?
I'm, pardon me?
But not for the fire department?
No.
Oh, okay.
I said, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
Chief O'Neill, is he available?
McNeil.
McNeil.
That's all right, I'm Vinny, Vince, Vin, and what the hell?
Good evening, everybody, and thank you all for your work.
Thank you, Chief. I'd love, I want to talk about possible cuts to your communication center equipment services.
That is not mine.
That is not yours? That is, who is that again? That EMS?
That would be under fire.
Under, oh, sorry, guys. All right, we'll actually stay there, I do have another question. Bear with me, if you will. This was quite a document to try to go through.
Point of clarification?
Yes?
Point of clarification? I'm kind of piggybacking on what Councilman Manna said, why are we going over a proposal that has not been proposed as an amendment yet?
My understanding is that Mr. Chase is discussing his amendment that he made, and in the discussion of the amendment, he is exploring other things that could have been added to the amendment, but were not. And so, he's just double-checking in this discussion to make sure that there was anything that there was, that he may have overlooked, is that right, Mr. Chase?
That's right, and I'm doing it because possibly there's something in this proposal that we could include in additional cuts.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the question. Chief, there is some reductions in your budget, I was curious to know how this would affect officers' equipment, such as bulletproof vests, anything of that nature?
Yeah, there was, there was a, one of the pages in here, I'm not sure what, it looked like they were trying to move the funding, and I'm not sure if they could do that. One of them was the, it was, it's really going to be, they're looking at reduce, moving $110,000 for our patrol cars, which is already leased, we're in the middle of the lease.
Yeah.
And the reason why we do that, because instead of hitting the town up for 1.4 million for cruisers every three years or four years, we leased it to break it up, because, you know, we go through cars very quickly. We put a lot of miles on them, they run 24/7, so that's why we have to lease it, was to not hit the town. One year we did, I think we got 12 cars to change out our fleet, and it was, it was a lot of money. And so, we do this to slowly, gradually move our fleet, and move cars over into like a spare status. There's also in here portable radios, to move that out. I'm not sure why, because we're in a process of going to digital radio, so, once we do that, we have to replace a lot of radios, because they won't take the digital encryption, so we got to change them out.
Now, just a minute, for a second, now, isn't that why we need that, because people are interfering with your calls, or they're listening in?
Yes, somebody's on our frequency, and they break in, and they, one time they called in, and they started screaming, "Officer down." So, somebody actually does this, they burp on there, and all kinds of things, and it's been going on for a couple of years now. Another one was, they also, it looks like in-car cameras and body cameras. We're going to body cameras, and that is going to be 100% reimbursed by the state, but we have to do it by June 30th. The money's, we need to finish the project, that's, we have 75 body cams to put on everybody in patrol, and that's good for the officer, it's also good for the public. Another one was the mobile command van, we're in a process, that's in the middle of the lease, that's a 10-year lease, it's only $25,000 a year. We did that, because it cost roughly $110,000, we didn't want to, again, hit the town up for a big cost. Our old command van was 22 years old, and it didn't start half the time, and the generator would leak back into the compartment, so. But there's also a cut on this one, we're for $10,000 in our training. Training for us is like, it's a lifeline, it protects my officers and protects the public. One of the biggest, big ones we're going to do next year is de-escalation. Now, to get off, every officer through that training runs about $15,000. So, you know, that's probably our, the most important one for us. We also have a state mandate, we have to send people to this training, by the state standards, to maintain certifications. And it cycles, because every three years, we have to go in and get our certification. Well, next year happens to be a big recertification for many officers. So, my only comment is that if, you know, department heads are not the enemy, I mean, we want to work with you for whatever you need. Like last year, it was brought up to us, and they asked what we could do, we said, "You know what, we won't hire 108 officers, we'll go down to 106." Well, actually, we kept it down to 104. So, just talk to us, and vet this with us, we'll work together, we'll figure it out. And, by the way, all, every agency works together, we just, we don't operate in a bubble, we work with Board of Ed, we work with Fire, EMS, everybody. It's kind of a community effort, because if you have a child in need, whether it's Board of Ed who identifies and sends it to us, we work with Fire, everybody, all agencies together to help these children. I think it's important just to all understand, everything impacts everything else, and you have to think it out, you have to talk to all the departments, the Board of Ed, and come together in a consensus, how you're going to fix the problems in this town. It's a great town, and I agree, we have a lot of work to do.
Thank you, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, I'm sorry, Mr. Chase, but the mayor, again, would like to respond to those items. I think we were talking about debt, the debt retirement, capital equipment purchase, the $398,614 that Mr. Khan had proposed, and that's where these items are, just to clarify why we were talking about that. And so, it sounds like that wasn't a good idea, but, Mr. Mayor?
Nothing was proposed.
Was, was, was provided?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief O'Neill, Chief McNeil? See, the Irish have a sense of humor, that's the one thing great about the Irish.
I've been called the worst.
They laugh at themselves pretty easily. But I'd like to thank Deputy Chief Poppick for being here, and the other officers present today, for your dedication and commitment to our taxpayers. Our police department has gone through a major transition, it offers a lot of people opportunities internally, they do a great job under the leadership of Chief McNeil, McNeil. Chief, the current proposal before us, this is going to keep our crossing guards, is that, we're not going to lose any crossing guards, are we?
No, we will not on this one.
Under this proposal?
Under the Chase, the one that Mr. Chase had amended.
Okay, and you're also going to get supplied with bulletproof vests?
Correct.
Okay, and your cars, your fleet will be intact in order to do patrols in the area. Also, the PAL program, I know some towns and cities, I'll use Water Bay as an example, has done a fantastic program with PAL as far as increasing it, I know we're trying to revitalize it right now. Does this budget help support the PAL for our kids?
It does, and let me explain that out. If I don't have cuts in other areas, I can keep the programs that I have. If I have to make up a cut somewhere else, I got to pull back programs, so it all kind of works together. I look at my budget as one whole thing. When we get down to within 90% spent, we start freezing things. Now, I have officers out doing communities policing right now. If I can't fund certain things, and I have to save money somewhere, I got to pull back. So, that's how I look at it. If I, if I can't do these things, I got to pull my officers back, so we're just purely putting officers in patrol, we're not doing community policing, the PAL program. Community policing is an integration of the PAL, and law enforcement, and just working for a certain district, where everybody knows the officer, they give out their cards, they give out their phone numbers, and they work together. But it got, it has to integrate. If I can't, if I have to cut something on one end, I got to pull back on that end.
Well, I got to tell you, the kids that I see in the program are fantastic, and I just want to thank you for moving that program forward, and really trying to grow it. I know one of the issues that we had talked about too, was helping to have more patrols, I believe you call it community policing. And we were talking about opening up the substation down in the south end of Stratford, does this budget cover that?
It does.
I know funds are tight, and, you know, we want to make sure that the police are in the community, whether it's walk, you know, walk and talk, and down the green, or Stratford Center, but also in areas, you know, that have, may have a little more activity, particularly during the summer months, so this would protect that?
Yes.
Okay. Chief, thank you for your service for our community.
Thank you, sir.
Much appreciated.
Thank you, is that it for police, and then is there, are there any other areas that you'd like to discuss, Mr. Chase?
Just three more, Madam Chairman. Public Works, maybe Mo and Renee? Good evening. Mr. McCarthy, a couple of quick questions. First of all, there's a part-time, someone on payroll, part-time, can you tell me what that person does, and why we need this part-time position in Public Works?
I believe that's the administration.
That's correct, she's a data entry clerk, basically, and answers phones, schedules bulk pickup, does other scheduling, she works four hours a day, 8:00 to noon, and she does all the report printing, and other paperwork that supports all divisions within the department.
She also puts in work orders and takes...
In the microphone?
She also puts in all the work orders, and she takes all the calls for missed garbage, and dispatches the sanitation crew out there to go pick up that garbage, so, heavy, heavy, heavy phones.
Heavy phones? What about on snow days?
Heavy phone calls, every day, the... Heavy phone calls, every day of the week is heavy phone calls. Our phones ring incessantly with anything from dead animals on the road to missed garbage to...
I guess the question I want to ask is, if we do eliminate this position, what would it mean?
What would happen is, there would be frustration on the residents' part because the phone would end up rolling over to the answering service, and then there would be a delay because that message would take its time coming to us through the service. And that would also incur an additional expense because we get charged by the call that rolls over to the service. So, you're, you're gonna pay a fee for all those missed calls that our staff can't handle because there's, you know, there's, sometimes that phone, there's four lines ringing at a time.
There was another proposed, there was another cut that was kind of intriguing, and that was the payroll overtime. Why is, why would you need payroll in the garage, excuse me, overtime in the garage?
Breakdowns, after-hour calls. You have to bring a mechanic in if a fire apparatus is down, a police car is down, equipment that we might have on the road working for some reason. It's a four-hour call, contractual call.
Okay, does that ever apply to the, I really got a thing for snow plowing. How does that affect snow plowing?
Snow plowing, you're paying between $4,000 and $7,000 an hour during the storm. For all the trucks on the road, we have at least three mechanics working. The breakdowns are anything from a broken snowplow blade to a broken axle or what have you on the road. The equipment is in good shape now, but you constantly run into hitting a manhole cover. When you do that, it shakes the daylights out of the vehicle, obviously, and you end up with damage.
Do you keep the chains on the tires during the winter months all the time, or do you have to take...
No, we don't. We only put them on when a storm of anywhere from four to four inches and above is predicted.
Does that require overtime?
No. It requires overtime because the crew is in. When, when we have 22 trucks on the road, there's three mechanics working.
Point of order?
And, and that's...
I'm sorry. I, I would like to ask council members to not be communicating with the public or, and to pay attention to the speakers. Thank you. If you need a pen, we have that too.
You can't dictate how we take notes.
No, I can't, you're right.
Can we proceed, please?
But if it looks like there's communications, that's a different story.
You're dictator now.
Okay, thank you, we'll get back.
Sorry, Mo.
If, if we have heavy equipment on the road, and when it is for snow, it's 22 or 23 heavy trucks, we have three mechanics working. Actually, two mechanics and a welder. And it, it's for the breakdowns, or the plow breakage and repair, because every truck that goes down means a root is not covered, there's 22 or 23 roots in town.
In addition, we do put the chains on the police cars as well. On the police cars, so as the snow gets heavier and they're having a harder time getting up and down like Warner Hill or anything, they also come in and have their chains put on.
Just a couple more in Public Works. Tell me about yard waste pickup, that's the old leaf pickup. There's a reduction, proposed reduction there. Any effect there? Can you handle the, can you handle removing of leaves?
There is an effect.
I'm sorry, and Mr. Chase, and what line are you looking at, to be clear? Because it looks like...
Oh, it looks like it's an increase.
Increase.
Okay. That's good.
Okay, and Mr. Chase?
Thank you, thank you, Tina. Okay, short beach outside services, is that public, a Public Works function?
Yes, it is.
Okay. What exactly are the outside services for? It's kind of vague.
We have a contracted service that goes in and cleans the restrooms. They go in twice a day during the heavy summer months, seven days a week. They also lock and secure the bathrooms at the end of every night, so when beachgoers get there in the morning, the bathrooms are clean for them.
Well, why can't we have Public Works employees do this?
If we had Public Works employees do it, it would incur an enormous amount of overtime because if they had to come in twice a day on a Saturday and a Sunday, it's a four-hour minimum both times. So, you're adding, especially even during the week at night, because they lock them up at 10 o'clock. So, that's overtime. And then, twice on Saturday and twice on Sunday is overtime for those members as well.
I got it, we don't want disgusting bathrooms, I hear ya.
Or a large amount of overtime.
Okay. And last one, and I guess this would be maybe Mr., would be the Finance Director, Mr. Timiak, and Mr. Louise? Thank you, Mo, thank you, Renee. Mr. Wahlberg, I'll just start with, this is just a quick one. We have a program called Munis?
In the Finance Department, we have our operating software called Munis.
Yeah.
That is correct.
Okay. There's a proposal here of a potential cut in your contract services. Would that affect Munis?
Well, the, what we budgeted is what we are required to pay to support our software. And the software is what the town works with, Munis, all the finance package, payroll, and everything else. So, we're obligated for that. It's not something we can cut.
So, it's a contractual obligation?
Yes, the contract, we're obligated under a contract.
Tongue-in-cheek, could we use QuickBooks? You don't have to answer that.
A 13-column worksheet.
Yeah, Mr. Louise, and Mr. Timiak, and, I'm sorry, Sir Kevin? There's a, there's some lines, employee benefits, EMS assigned, it's the pension 401K, it's 32,000, social security 46,000, M-Care taxes, EMS 48,000, and then we have 180,000, health insurance EMS assigned. Now, if I added all these, and I may have missed one, but I added all these figures up, and I came with $364,000. Looking at the line in the budget, it looks like there's already a reduc, a, a cut, not a cut, but there's a deficit in there of roughly 200 and some odd thousand dollars, which would bring it over 600. Is that a deficit we'd be creating with this in the EMS budget?
Yes.
Why would we do that?
I've been consistent for the last four years that we can't continue to sustain that. Every single Public Safety EMS funding meeting, I've made it clear, my position has always been the same, we can't continue to transfer $400,000 to the general fund and keep the enterprise fund solvent.
And what would the result, if we go forward with this, what would the result be?
You know, like every other department, I'm gonna have to, well, first of all, we only have a million dollars left in the enterprise fund. So, based on this number, we're cutting out more than half of that. In order to sustain employees and all that kind of stuff, I need to keep at least 20% operational in that fund in case of a problem. We're cutting it way close to that, and I'm not gonna be able to do a lot of the other items, you know, recruitment, retention, all that. I'm gonna have to tighten up everywhere, more than I'm already doing. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's not sustainable for the enterprise fund. And the following year, there won't be enough to fund a budget.
Chris, is there anything you want to add to that?
I mean, there's a couple of things. One, the mayor tried to address that, and he, last year proposed reducing the number EMS sends to the town, to the general fund. This year, he did the same thing, he reduced the number from the previous year. I've been working on a long-range plan with Mike, I've been working on a plan with Kevin as well. One of the things I've been pushing them to do, and they have been, they've increased the explorers program, which brings in volunteers, they've opened up their conference room to host classes, and the people who come take the classes then do the hours for our, our EMS firm. But this is where my aggravation comes, Councilman Chase, is that these two department heads bust their tail. And they bust their tail to help the residents of Stratford. And here, you know, here, they're constantly on edge, worrying about this stuff. The end result is EMS, the decision's gonna be made, do we support it as a town and it rolls in as a regular department? Or do we continue to do it this way, and we let them have, I want to say, the path we've been on, where the enterprise fund funds this, and they have their independence, and they have the ability to work without this constant stress and pressure? And I know Kevin wants to briefly talk about a couple...
Kevin?
Good evening, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I've been, I'll say, grandstanding on this topic for probably the greater part of 15 years. I once served on the EMS Funding Committee with several of my colleagues who are in the back here. Several councils ago, EMS inherited a problem that ultimately this council inherited, and that was that there was a year where the council artificially raised our revenues to offset the transfer of the general fund. We had been working with this administration to draw that down over time because the reality is, every single year for the past several years, we've had to sustain an increase in call volume. So, if you compare us to 2014, where our call volume's up by almost 11%. But we have an increased staff to accommodate that. We've made do with our administrative staff, myself, even Mike goes out and calls, okay? We're, we're trying to get every blood we can out of the stone, no pun intended. And the story that I'll tell you is, is that every decision and every proposal I've ever brought forward to you is with my own family in mind. I'm Stratford-born and raised, my family, my wife, my son, both my parents, who are both recent users of the 911 system. And what I can tell you is, is that five years ago, until Mayor Harkins came in and made some significant restructuring to the department, there was a time that I couldn't tell my parents they could dial 911 and get an ambulance. Our reliance on mutual aid in other towns to come into our, into our city was at an all-time high. And when I had dinner with them tonight, having transported my mother to the hospital last evening, I had to tell them, "I'm coming back here to fight for the same thing I fought five years ago," whereas you might dial 911 and not get an ambulance. That's been a longstanding effort on our part, and if we continue the, the drawdowns on our fund, where it was artificially raised, there's gonna become a point where our enterprise fund cannot sustain an ambulance purchase, substation building acquisition if we want to expand down to the south end larger area. Those are all things that the enterprise fund can sustain at no cost, long-term, but not if we don't address the drawdowns here tonight. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I know Mr., the mayor wanted to address this issue too, if you would allow him. Mr. Chase?
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Councilman Chase. Thank you, Michael, thank you, Kevin, for your dedication, all the EMS personnel. I can tell you that, anyone who's had a personal experience, and I know my mom was diagnosed with cancer, and you guys came, the transfer, the professionalism was unbelievable, but it was really the, the warmth and the care. And I hear that a lot throughout the town, not only from a personal experience, but from other residents who interact. And I get the emails, the compliments. One of the big things that we did, and some were doubting its success, was actually putting in ambulants up in the north end of town at the Orin Oak Fire Station. I know the, the village, for example, they're asking for that, to increase the hours, and I know that's a stress on resources. If cuts were made any further, as opposed to what's being proposed in this budget, would that jeopardize any expansion of ambulance services in the north end for coverage?
Yeah, absolutely.
Right, so why do we do, why do we want to do that? All the hard work we've done over the years to get up, get to the point where we are, we're on the right path, based on your leadership and Kevin, and really the commitment and dedication of our employees, and more importantly, your volunteers. Your explorers are great, I see them all over the place, so I want to say, keep up the good work, and, and we are still a heart-healthy community, aren't we?
Absolutely.
And that took a lot of work. Is that up annually? Do we do that, is, for approval, or...
Last year, I re-upped it.
Okay.
Last year or the year before.
Well, thank you for your ser... Thank you for your service and commitment to our community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chairman, I am, just will sum up now. I'm sorry, excuse me. On our budget, as I indicated, we've reduced the mayor's proposed mil rate. Our budget, or, excuse me, our amendment represents a 1.76% in overall increase from the mayor's budget. That, by the way, Madam Chairman, is below the cost of living.
That's from, that 1.76% increase is from last year's budget, not the mayor's proposed.
Right. So, I guess what I'm saying is, we, although we have a very, very minor, less than half of a point of a mil, you know, we're maintaining town services, and we're funding education to meet their needs. So, I, I would just urge my colleagues to support this, and let's work together over the coming year. The last meeting we had, we discussed some structural changes that could be made with consolidating some functions between the Board of Ed and, and the town. So, I just urge you to support this. It's reasonable, it's thought out, and frankly, I think it's very fair.
Okay. Mr. Llewellyn, you wanted to discuss?
No, I know that on Monday, we heard a lot of talk about, you know, some people up here kind of ran in their districts on, on zero tax increases. And, you know, I kind of see a lot of sides to that argument, but I think playing it as a card at the budget season is not really the proper way to go about handling, you know, handling your business. Over the course of the year, we talked about adding on a full-time light officer to address that situation. We voted to approve a teacher's salary. Now, I feel like we're at the end of the year, we've ordered the food, it's, it's time to pay the check. We, we can't go back on our promises and our commitments. So, I think to just talk about zero tax increases and bring it out as a, you know, as a budget season gimmick is not the right way to handle things. I think we do need to look at being more active with our ordinances, try to cut down on our regulations, like Mr. Chase just said, and as Joe Paul said during his comments Monday night, there are some structural things that we need to look at, ream costs in, and get ourselves a better, brighter future. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Harden?
The amendment that was placed, supported by Beth, myself, Alan, and Mr. Chase, I think it's one of the ways to go. You know, when you think about cutting, you know, public services, public services are, it's one of the things that make this town. We're alive today because of some of the public services and the volunteers that we have within this town. I think the, the Stephanie Phillips-Khan budget that was put in front of us was prematurely given to us, and I don't think that it was well thought out, even though there was a lot of work put to it. There were no, there were a lot of repercussions with this budget. And, you know, I don't want to be secondhand to Bridgeport, which made some major cuts with their police department and some other departments that really sent them tumbling down a hill. And we talk about a town being a town of four seasons. In order to have a town of four seasons, we need these departments that are somewhat being jeopardized. We need Public Works, we need the Fire, we need the Police, we need EMS. You know, when I took this job, someone said to me, "This is a thinkless job that you're doing." And I said, "Reality is, is that when you have citizens, you know, at your hand, the things that they desire, the things that they need in order to survive in this environment or this community, it's important. This is an important job." And, again, I would like to ask for the support for our amendment that we put forth, and this way, it's equal across the board. Yes, there are some cuts that need to be made, and I think this is a wake-up call for some of the administrators to be a little bit more financially responsible with some of the spinatures and the things, decisions that they make. Next time around, it may not be as easy as it is this time. And again, I really think it's really disheartening that we would even think about cutting Police, Fire, and EMS. I would not even second... I would not even second-guess that. You know, that's just something you don't do to a town that jeopardizes residents. So when we talk about having compassion, the budget that we put forth talks about having compassion and some financial responsibility. And though, again, as Mr. Allen, Llewellyn said, that, you know, we can't promise you that there'll be no increases. There are certain financial responsibilities that we have within this town that have to be met. And when they have to be met, there are some points where we have to come up just a little bit, you know? And again, nobody wants to hear the taxes go up, but, you know, the taxes will be here when we're alive, and the taxes will be here when we're dead. It's the cost of being in this town and any other surrounding town. So again, thank you, everyone, for coming out, all the department heads, the police, fire, and EMS, and Public Works. And again, thank you for all that you do. We can never pay you enough. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Antezza?
Madam Chairman, thank you. What was not mentioned was what your new tax rate would be. The mill rate under this plan would be 39.68, and the amount of money given to the Board of Education under this particular plan is over $3 million. So I don't know how you explain that to people that have asked for lower figures. I took the mayor's, in case your interest, I took the mayor's 39.93 and subtracted .25 because you said your mill rate would decrease by .25 mil. So it brings it to 39.68.
Is there anything else, Ms. Antezza, that you wanted to mention? No? Okay, Ms. Manis.
Hi. Thanks, everybody, for coming out again tonight. As we go through this process, and with eyes that I think are a lot wiser than maybe even last year, I'm really proud of all of the councilors who've put forward proposals. And I have to say, kudos to everyone. This is not an easy, this is not easy work. I know Ms. Antezza and I worked on it from day one to try and find the $5 million gap with regards to WPCA. Nothing is easy. Nothing. So it's not easy. But what's not easy is opening the paper on Sunday and seeing Bridgeport's not giving their residents an increase of taxes. What's not easy is seeing Shelton and Milford dropping their mill rates, and House Valley's rising and Trumbull and all around us, and in those places too. There has to be a correlation. The proposal that's been mentioned, and we're only talking about one amendment, but for some reason, we were allowed to talk about multiple ones, so I'm just going to share with you. The proposal amendment asks for town operations to be at 105, 105 million. That falls higher than the 2016 allocation, but lower than the 2017 ridiculous tax increase that we all experienced last year. If we do not start to do something, and I understand department heads can transfer within their departments, and there's always opportunities to transfer around, one of the things people have to remember is that we're going to start to close buildings, and that means we're going to lay off people. One of the things that we tried to do, and I was adamant about, is people. As far as the CIP and the CEP stuff, that stuff can be moved back and you can take from other places. I learned it by watching Mayor Harkins. When he had to come up, when I presented a proposal informally by email, because no one was working on it on my team last year, all of a sudden, a press release came, and I found out where all the money was and how we overfund health. And when I want to know, when I have to answer questions to the collective bargaining as to why our people aren't in the HEP programs and the health enhancement programs, and why they're being persuaded into HSAs, and why we're still self-funding, the answer is, and Mr. Dumas spoke about it at the public forum, is because those health reserves are very healthy. And we are using, that money is there. If you want to fund education with it, like as Mr. Dumas said, awesome. But you can't live on a credit card forever. And I don't want to see people lose their jobs. I don't want to see firehouses closed. I don't want to see policemen not be allowed to do the community policing stuff. That is important to our community. When we look at a Board of Education that still has unanswered questions, I'm sorry, when I'm hearing zero, I'm going to have to tell, I'm calling, I'm answering the phone and explaining to people why I'd even consider anything over zero. I told you at the last meeting, it's about $216,000 roughly. It's 216 million. Split it down the center. It doesn't do a lot. So then you have to make choices and compromises. And the teams got together and they did that. But there's only so much in the bank, and we can't just keep expanding because we're hurting things like EMS. And I want to talk about EMS really quickly because they were here. I don't know if you know, but there is a lot of question marks around the fact that the 83, 88-3, I believe it is, of the town code, calls for no charges or, if it's an underpayment, for services and user fees for people who go to EMS. If they don't pay, we write it off. Guess what that does to their enterprise fund? It decimates it. We need to have accountability in there. We also need to have a hardship provision. But we can't have people abusing EMS. Those people work hard. I don't know if you remember, Jared Levine in the dog park, he was an EMS worker. Like, my friends were on EMS. They worked damn hard. I want their enterprise fund to grow and be healthy, but we've got to get enterprise monies into alignment. The 1.7 million or so that is WPCA transfers can't happen anymore. We are living in a dream world. Those transfers from EMS, they shouldn't have happened, and guess what? All of their benefits have to come under them, or else we have to make them officially a part of our town. Aren't they worth it? I just want you to think for a minute about our community. We have an opportunity to really live our values and to give a little bit to everybody. But having people use scare tactics, I see a yard pickup taken out. I said, it's probably plugged in somewhere else. Mitzi was saying, we were sitting, we were talking about it yesterday. We plugged it back in so it's clear for people, so it doesn't scare them that it's not going to happen. And you want to know what someone said to me? Hey, maybe it's a business opportunity for somebody. Maybe we could help each other. Most people are not looking at these things as crossing guards. For example, I get it. Move it around. Let's talk about it. Okay, so that's a mistake. Don't impale people for a mistake. There's conservative values in this town, there's liberal values in this town, we have to find the middle somewhere. In the proposal that you'll see from our team, things like VNA are included to the gut-wrenching dismay of people on this council. People don't want to do that. But guess what? That was their idea. So we took it. I said, okay, we're going to make compromise. I will not compromise people and full-time firefighters and policemen, and I will not compromise the integrity of the EMS enterprise fund any longer. And structural changes need to be made. And 88-3, an amendment is being worked on currently to free them up from that ridiculous thing, which I believe is Medicare fraud. It could potentially, when you have outside people outside the town being forced to pay and inside people being forgiven, you're going to have a problem because you're taking other people's money to do it. When you get mixed up with federal and state, as we all know with the schools, you hit some problems. And that's one of the reasons why the audit needs to happen with the schools and why that information was sent to the Connecticut Commissioner of Education by myself, is I don't want Stratford to look like a fool. I don't want Stratford to suffer anymore, and I don't want the residents to suffer. And I'm willing to work with people, but we got to make decisions, and they're going to be hard ones. But I'm not going to cut full-time people. Really? Like, that's not okay. But we're going to close buildings, whether they're schools or firehouses or things. Potentially, if we don't fix this, we got to fix it. And we got to get more revenue. Call your friends. Tell them, open a business here. We have to increase revenue, and we can't do it on the backs of homeowners. Thank you.
Mr. Harden?
You know, we talked the other day about--
Point of clarification, we're only supposed to be allowed to speak one time.
Until, no, that's not true. You can speak once. I saw nobody else wanting to speak. Mr. Harden did want to speak, so I called him.
Point of information, according to our rules, everybody has to have a chance to speak.
Mr. Leclerc?
No, your rules regulate the series specifically. Everyone has a chance to speak once, and then the chair may recognize an individual who wants to speak again. The chair's correct. If no one is raising their hand to speak, she cannot force anyone to speak on an issue than someone who has spoken once does have the opportunity to speak again.
I'm sorry, Mr. Harden had the floor.
I'll make this very quickly. You know, we talked during the week about comparing other towns. This is a special town. It's very hard to compare other towns around us about some of the resources that we have here. As we know, Bridgeport is a motherling city to us. It's next door to us. It lines my district. They did zero increase, but it came with a cost. It's a city that has 10 homicides, you know, every four, you know, four weeks. The police department was cut supposedly by 50 people, okay? And some of the other agencies were cut at a cost that will cost the residents a point of feeling unsafe, at a cost where there may not be a police officer when you need them, calls to be placed on hold, at a cost where some crime and criminal activity may never be investigated. So there are some things that come with a cost. This is a town within itself. This is a structure within itself. And though we've heard all the compassionate speeches here, reality is, is that these numbers put together that we were given to by Mr. Ken, it doesn't add up. It didn't add up when it was first handed to us, and it doesn't add up now. So let the truth be made where it needs to sit. We talk about education. I graduated from Stratford High School. I gave this speech about me being in special needs classes when I lived in Bridgeport and came to Stratford. And the resources that were given to me here over seeded what I received in Bridgeport. So I know there are some questions about the education department, the Board of Ed, how they spend their money, and a lot of questions that were considered unanswered. I have frustrations with that, too. And I've called over there, I've marched over there, I've inquired about certain things, and some of the questions that I had were never answered. We talk about the kids being our future. I'm a person that, I sat where you sat, and I said, boy, I want to be up there one day. I'm a part of the future that town of Stratford invested. I'm a part of a project of the educational system here within this town. So I want to give the Board of Ed what they need in order to survive. They may not be lucky the next time around, just like other departments here, but we have to do something. Yes, it hurts, but we have to do something.
Thank you. Mr. Kadim? You wanted, I saw your hand up first.
No problem, no problem. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Now, when you look at me and you see the journey, there's a lot go into who I am. You know, it's truly through the grace of God, all that I am is because of God. But I have to say this, in my family, I had an uncle, police officer, an aunt, police officer, correction, another aunt that's a correction officer. My uncle, Malvin Skinner, if you look at the Getz case, Bernie Getz, who was shooting everybody in the train station, he was the officer who brought him out of the train station in handcuffs with a goose-down coat with a tie and a shirt. Now, my uncle was more like a father to me, because my father left when I was three. And he had a lot of qualities about him. My grandfather, you know, was a Baptist minister. He raised 13 children. And when you look at the breakdown of the thought process to have 13 children, how you can make things work with less, and how outstandingly his journey was outstanding to raise so many good people. In that family, two aunts became nurses. It was nine boys and four girls. Now, everybody not going to make it. We all know that. So two aunts became nurses. One of my aunts was a police officer who got hurt on the job and had to get a replaced knee. So of course, that goes into compensation and so forth. And when you look at how much public service is in my family, it's only, you know, clear that I cannot allow anything to happen to the police, fire, EMS. If you don't see that, like, when I looked at the breakdown of the paperwork, and I expressed to my colleague, one of them, I said, I can't go with anything that's against the police, the firemen, EMS. This is service. This is services. You can't cut services. Public Works, another thing, you can't cut services. You can't look for revenue from services either, because they're servicing the community. They're not there trying to make money, they're trying to keep us safe and keep us whole. Now, the other part of it is, when you look at, how you say, value systems. Now, some people move into town, they look at schools and so forth. That wasn't, that wasn't the case for me. Moving out here was so that my children don't have to grow up where I grew up at, or grow up in a fast-paced city so they can know where grass is in the front of the house, grass in the back of the house, get to park their car. Instead of on the street worrying about a ticket, you get to park in your driveway. That's important. And this town has been 100% the place I needed to be and wanted to be, and I'm happy to be here. Quite naturally, I don't agree with everything. I didn't agree with the budget last year. I didn't vote with the budget last year because I thought it was way out of whack. If you look at the money that comes in, 200-plus million, right? So you're giving, I mean, was it 200-plus million, you're getting 108 or whatever to Board of Ed. Then what's left over go to the town. Now, if y'all don't pay attention to this, we're going to be living on the street. Because if you keep giving Board of Ed money, that it keeps going higher and higher and higher, there's not going to be any money for the town side to continue to have these services that we have. So you got to pay attention to that. Got to pay attention. And I don't think everybody's paying attention. Everybody falls in love with the idea that a person can come to a mic and push their kid up there and say all of these stories about the Board of Ed. But now, when the situation came this year, I didn't see that many children out there. I didn't even see no parents really speaking about the Board of Ed because they got too much money. So it impacted their taxes. That's why I didn't see a lot of people. Last year, I seen tons of people out there. This year, wasn't like that. Now, for those who are in love with that budget, knock yourself out. If you do not put a cap on the Board of Ed, you are not going to be in this town anymore. It has to have a cap. If you have a building with 10 employees, 10 teachers, 20 teachers, whatever the number may be, custodians, you have the young ladies, mostly young ladies, in the cafeteria, you have Janet, I said custodians, nurse, you have a nurse or two, depends, and then how many supervisors do you need? You have a, I, when one school, I think, has a principal, assistant principal, and another assistant principal. I mean, like, also, the principal can't do his job, assistant principal can't do their job, and then the other assistant principal can't do their job. So what do you need all these people for? Where all these salaries coming from? And then you have, you have the head administrator at the Board of Ed, and someone under her, and then someone over her. Well, how many people it takes to run this place? How much money y'all going to keep giving away blindly? There's no results coming out of that. I have three sons go to the school, school in Stratford. My stepson, he went to Lordship. They was talking about closing, and that's when I started on that road of trying to restore or fight for the rights of the children of the school. And I came out and fought against Lordship being closed, and through the grace of God, they didn't close Lordship. My next son went to Lordship. I didn't want him to go to Lordship. I wanted him to go where we live, at Johnson House. So the lottery sent us there. Fine, we went. They start calling me all the time to come up to the school because of my son. I said, well, he's African-American. My heritage, Jamaican and Cuban. That's my heritage. My mother's Jamaican, my father's Cuban. So if you can't relate to people of color, then you shouldn't have a school. I asked last year, where are the African-American and Latino teachers? Where are they? I don't know. You need to put them there. Because if you don't understand the thought process of people who come from that different background, then you're always going to be calling their parents to bring them up to the school. Almost lost my job behind that, thank you very much. But what I did do was take my son out of that school and put him in Johnson House where he belonged to begin with, when I said that to them. They didn't listen. Then my youngest son, Johnson House, was abused by a teacher for months. My son would come home and cry himself to sleep, night after night. I'd go up to the school, speak to the principal, what's going on with this lady? Come to find out, other children were being abused by this lady. They wound up firing her. So if you've got so much money that you can't watch your workers, then you don't need no money. You need to get down there and do your job. And if you don't like that, learn to love it, because you need to do your job. So while everybody's in love with the Board of Ed, I'm not the guy. I'm not in love with the Board of Ed because they have failed me three times. Three children, three times. But I never was felt by the police. I never was pulled over and mistreated. The firemen came and saved my house, the police kept the streets straight, Public Works continued to cut the trees and keep everything right. So I don't understand where even any discussion about cutting any services. I don't understand it. I don't understand it. Maybe you guys are wiser than me, probably are, but I'm saying if that's not restored, I can't vote on no budget, not one that cuts jobs. It was talking about a blight officer. Okay, well, what was going on in your district where you didn't need a blight officer? We need a blight officer in two, three, and four. So we have one. You don't want them? Okay, do what you do. I'm not for cutting the blight officer. I'm not for cutting the registers officer. I'm not for cutting any jobs. When you speak about Mr. Ying came up, am I saying your name right? Ying. Mr. Ying came out, and he explained the money that he has is for training, testing for new police officers. Now, if you have a department that comes up and tell you what the money is for, the police chief came up, he explained what the money is for, the firemen came up, explained what the money for, EMS came up what the money is for. Now, I don't know everything, but if that's their department, they know more than I know. So I'm hoping that whatever this situation occurs with the budget this time, that we don't forget that. That we don't forget that. So thank you very much, and I hope that we do right. Got to.
Thank you, Mr. Ken. I saw your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Speaking to the topics that were addressed, first, I want to thank the Police and the Fire Department and EMS for being here tonight. And there were some suggested budget cuts on Monday that were inappropriate because of the titles that were in the budget, and I especially did not spend enough time talking to you about what those meant. For example, part-time police traffic is really the crossing guards. So that has been restored to a proposal that we will present later, for example. The Mr. Lampard's secretary will be restored. The training budget for the Police Department, it was budgeted last year for 220,000. It was increased in the mayor's budget to 230. We were taking a stab at saying, "Can we keep it at 220?" And he made a, you know, the chief made a statement that with new officers being hired, he needs more money for that training. So that's back in. I want to speak about the EMS and the benefits for that department. So enterprise funds, Stratford has at least two categories of enterprise funds, maybe more. They sometimes treat WPCA as its own animal, and the golf course, the short beach, and the EMS and the railroad as a different type of fund. One of my objectives when I was elected, or say, seeking office, was what we'll call the allocation of overhead, where it's the cost accounting between the different departments of the town. And you'd want each department to recognize its total cost of doing business so that you knew what the all-in cost to the taxpayers were for those departments' expenses. And through those number of meetings with the finance and other individuals in Town Hall, we recognized that while the enterprise fund for EMS has been paying all of, most of its expenses, including its own salaries, it has not been paying for its human, its health care, its 401K, and other human, I just forgot the word, you know, those human benefits, those employee benefits. So the EMS Enterprise Fund is losing money today, and it has for the last couple of years. A project needs to be initiated by the town, and Mr. Timmy Ak brought that up earlier, that he's been working with Michael and other members of the EMS team to correct how income is recognized by EMS, correct how in-kind services, those things that EMS does on behalf of the town, such as bringing ambulances to all the sporting events, such as checking all the heart rate monitors around the town buildings. So there's certain values, valuable things that EMS does that it's not getting credit for in the budget. Those need to be added. Tina mentioned some of the corrections and how income is recorded. It may require a charter change. But to get more revenue for EMS, change the charter. If people don't have a true hardship, then they should be required to pay. So there's a lot of moving pieces that have, for some reason, not been addressed when it comes to the EMS Enterprise Fund. And what a commitment that I made to Michael when we talked earlier today is that I would be an agent of change. And I know that our, there's no council member up here who does not want EMS Enterprise Fund to be successful. The PAL programs, the EMS itself is one of those intrinsic assets of the town. It's like Short Beach or Booth Park. When people think of Stratford, they think about our paramedics, our volunteer EMS. It's one of those characteristics that make us special versus all of our neighbors. So that's an asset, that's a value for all of us that choose to move here. It's one of the highest quality performing response time agencies in the state, if not. So it needs to be protected and preserved. The idea of moving the benefits from the town side to the EMS side is not to reduce services. It has nothing to do with reducing the benefits anyone gets. It simply has to do with making that fund accountable for all of its expenses. And the one piece of expenses that it's missing now is its employee benefits. So you're not being punished. You are going to be adding more expenses to your enterprise fund, but every one of us up here knows that that whole equation has to be corrected because, as Michael and Mr. Timmy Ak said a moment ago at the podium, it's been going on too long. So one of my frustrations is a lot of problems have been festering in town. We can't fix them all. The mayor was very assertive about fixing the pension situation a couple of years ago, and we need to be assertive about fixing our enterprise funds. So I hope I explained why the movement for the EMS employee benefits is appropriate. It's a transfer from a town expense to an EMS enterprise expense because it belongs there. But we're not going to leave it alone. We have to correct the whole value equation for EMS so it can remain that valuable asset and that it deserves to be that we want it to be. The next enterprise fund is a WPCA. WPCA rate holders represent about 92% of the households in Stratford. WPCA rate holders for the last six years have paid $50 extra that the other 8% of the households don't have to pay. That adds up to about $1.1 million a year. So that's about $7 million that the town has used to fund the general fund that really belongs to the WPCA. Because the town charter says, "If you collect it through WPCA rates, it can only be used for WPCA services." And that's very frustrating that despite that, quote, "taking of money" to balance a budget because maybe our, well, our taxes aren't generating enough revenues. We start looking in other places. Let's take it from the WPCA rate holders. Let's raise their rates and bring some of that money over to the general fund. That was another one of my objectives when I was running for office, is that taking of money cannot be justified by any financial equation. It's just a, it's just a taking of money that's then used for general fund purposes. The WPCA also has a revolving fund where all the connection fees, when, for example, Avalon connects and they have 400 apartments, they pay $4,000 times 400, and that goes into this revolving fund. And that revolving fund had built up to about $4 million. Now it only has $800,000 in it. That money was taken by the town to balance the general fund again under the auspices of something called a tax relief transfer. There's state statutes, and again, town charter provisions that say these accounts, the revolving fund, the WPCA operations fund, can only be used for specific purposes. So one of my objectives was to stop the taking of money from our enterprise funds, stop overcharging the enterprise fund's customers, and use the money appropriately within that fund, charge the customers an appropriate level, and have the town be accountable for its own expenses. The proposals that Chase and DePonte have put forward don't correct those. They actually continue it by taking more money out of the railroad fund. Two years ago, the railroad fund had over about $2 million in it. Now it only has 600,000. They took the money last year and used it to help balance last year's budget. So our tax increases should have been higher because we're not raising enough money. We're actually spending all of our savings accounts. We're raiding our enterprise funds. And that money's not there anymore. The WPCA should have about $7 million in the bank, and it only is going to have about four. And it has $14 million of capital improvements it needs to pay for, flood mitigation, all those pumps that move the affluent through the pipes. So where's it going to get to 17 now that the town took seven? You know what I'm trying to say. It's hard to keep raising rates when you see the money going for purposes it wasn't intended for. So we're depleting, we've depleted, we had a debt relief fund that had $7 million in it five, six years ago. That only has $300,000 left. So we keep borrowing the money from our savings account, our strategic cash reserves, our rainy day fund. And people complain about the bond rating, and Mr. Ken's proposal is going to hurt our bond rating. Well, the thing that put us in the position of being at risk for a bond rating is we don't have any money in the bank anymore. And the bond companies say, "If you have a catastrophe, how are you going to pay for it? You guys are almost broke." And we're broke because we've not been honest about our tax situation, and we've been borrowing from our historic reserves. It's sort of like spending your kid's college fund or your grandchild's Christmas fund. It's, you're taking care of short-term problems and ignoring what should be strategic investments. So I need a budget proposal that stops raiding what's left of our enterprise funds. I need a budget proposal that stops raiding the WPCA. A budget proposal that pays back the WPCA that was taken, that money that was taken out of the revolving fund because the WPCA needs that money to pay for its own capital improvements. And there are some very aggressive cuts in here, but the EMS is not being cut. The money's being transferred for the reason that I explained a few moments ago. And we need a project that's been long delayed to correct how the income and expenses for the WPCA are accounted for. Mr. Timmy Ak mentioned it. Mike's aware of it. Let's get down and get it done. That's it. Thank you.
The mayor would like to ask you to speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all for being here. Councilmembers, I'll try not to read what I spoke about last night. However, I do support the amendment as before us this evening. It gets us to where we want to go. And, you know, I've heard a lot of answers, or a lot of questions get answers this evening, which I hope satisfies this council. Because I know that after the amendment failed on Monday, there was talk of another amendment coming forward, and we saw the numbers. And prior to that, I heard that Councilman Khan, you had pinpoint accuracy, I quote, on your proposals that you were putting forth. And now, tonight, we're hearing that, well, they weren't correct. We didn't know. And some things are restated again as far as funding, for some clarification. And I guess that's my concern, is that it's great to debate the budget, and it's great that we're here this evening, but I guess the question more importantly is, where are we going in the future? Where are we going to be next year? Councilman Khan stated that money's tight. He has a lot of concerns with the enterprise funds. And I think, you know, part of that is, I think it's good that you're asking these questions. And I think the more you learn and the more you drill down on these things, I think you'll find out why some things happen. And if you can make improvement, that's great. And that's what we're here as a body to do. However, my concern is about our town as a whole, our reputation. Do people want to move here? Are we going to support services in town? Whether it's education, police, fire, Public Works, it's the big picture. People read the paper about us. They're watching what we're doing in Stratford. We're doing well commercially. We're attracting businesses. Isn't that nice? Sikorsky's staying. Our commercial grant list is growing. Those are facts. Not making them up. That's a fact. It's continuing to happen. But I tell you, when I see articles in the paper about what's going on in town, that's a concern. Do I want to move to a community that's questioning funding education? Do I want to move to a community that's talking about cutting back on economic development? Do I want to move to a community that's talking about cutting back on public safety? Good questions. That's not a good selling point. So if I, as a mayor, have to sell this town, I want to sell a town that's marketable, one that does well. Our municipal services are doing fantastic. I'm hearing it from all you tonight. This is an aisle. Why are you going to handicap them? I hear a lot of questions about the Board of Ed. I got to tell you, good questions. And I think we have a lot of good candidates here for the Board of Ed in the future. I really do. And I would encourage people to run. When your terms are up here, whether you go six years, or two years, or four, run for the Board of Ed. Ask those questions. Go down there and do all your research down there. But it's almost like we're armchair quarterbacking here sometimes and dealing with what limited information we have. It's hard. I know you guys have a hard job. I really do. And this is the biggest vote you'll probably have. But my question is, where are we going? Is it going to be zero? Is it going to be a cheap political talking point? Zero? I mean, that's fine, but what are the ramifications? And I'm not going to talk about gloom and doom, but it's reality. There's going to be tough decisions made. We do them all the time here. Where do you want to go as a community? Do you want to grow, or do you want to pull back? Do you want to be the town that people want to move to, or do you want to be the town that people are going to drive through to? I want to be the town that people want to live here, work here, educate their children, and play here. You know, there was talk about cutting back on overtime. Well, I got news for you. We use overtime at Public Works to pick up trash on weekends. The reason why is because the seawall, the trash cans are overflowing, and the paradise green, Stratford Center. So we thought, "Hey, what a great idea. We'll pay a little, we'll invest a little more money in Public Works to hire, have someone go out and pick up the trash." These are basic services, but there's a cost associated with them. We don't have to, but it's something that we chose to do because it makes our town look better. And we stopped getting complaints. This amendment before us continues the services that we get. Are we going to continue to look for efficiencies? You bet. Are we going to look for ways to better spend our money? You bet. Are we going to get recommendations from this council? I guarantee it, and that's a good thing. So again, I thank you all this evening. I hope you support this amendment before you. Let's move Stratford forward.
Ms. Antozzo.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just have to comment about people moving to Stratford because I follow the real estate every week. Stratford sells more houses than any other town in Fairfield County, and they count also Milford. In the last year, they sold 1,251 houses. Okay. Now, my comment about this amendment, I don't think it is a good amendment. I think it's far too expensive for the people in Stratford to be paying 39.68 mils. And I think it's far too generous, considering last year, to go for another $3 million increase to the Board of Education. So I just can't support this amendment. Thank you.
Okay, then, Ms. Manas.
If I can, I'd like to address the mayor's comments because, you know, in 2013, and I do research, lots and lots of research, and when I want to get to know somebody, I kind of look into their background. Y'all looked into mine. So here's what I'm going to say is, there was a video posted online. I don't remember who did it. It was an African-American interview, interviewer, and there was a background, and it was about municipal services. And you were quoted as saying, "I don't think towns should be in the business of offering services at all." You said that. And I remember, we were in the midst of WPCA, and it was posted online. And I know that you are the chairman of ACCE, and I know that Alec and ACCE have had a hand in our town since even Doc Gunther was involved with ACCE. They've been in town for a long time. And ACC and Alec do different work, you know, they're part of the Pittsburgh movement. I'm sure Ms. DePonte knows all about that and how they're involved in Pittsburgh. She's from there. I'm concerned about that statement, and then in contrast to where you are now. So I'm just wondering, are you currently now in believing that towns should provide services? Have you changed your mind? I would love to know.
Listen, in an ideal situation, town ought to be a management agent, short of public safety. I tried it with the War of Push Control Authority. I still think it was a good idea. The voters rejected it, and I'm okay with that. The reality was, if we regionalized, we would still own it in a region, and we would have been better off financially, and our bond rating would improve. Those are facts, but it...
It wasn't about WPCA, it was about garbage and things like that.
We have to be talking about this somehow, about this amendment.
And we did look at, I did look at garbage, and we looked at recycling. And it didn't make sense for us at that point, because return to the taxpayers wasn't enough to benefit them, to privatize. But we did, we do look at those things. And I think as the mayor of a town, it's my responsibility to look at efficiencies. Can we do things better? Or better yet, should we be doing them at all? I mean, some towns have a fire, a volunteer fire department. We have a full-time department. Some towns have a hybrid, which I understand is very difficult. My point is, if we have it, support it. But yes, you should look at it, and can we do things better? And we did all that. And I think we're doing pretty well right now in the town of Stratford. That's unique to my community. Am I open for regionalization? Yeah, I tried. And I think somewhere in the future, maybe, perhaps, it may happen. I'll be far gone from then, but I hope that whoever runs the town in the future, 10 years, they're still looking at those same things, asking that same question, how do we deliver services well, and should we be doing it at all?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Young?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things to say. I want to thank the chief, and captain, and head of Public Works and EMS. Appreciate you guys all for coming out tonight. I really appreciate the work that you do. You do absolutely fantastic jobs. Being that I've been commuting these last couple weeks, it's made it a little difficult. And some of the things that have gone on with some of the budget suggestions have been a little bit off, apparently. I didn't know exactly some of the stuff, but Mr. Chase, you're correct. I mean, you know, some of these things were wrong. And have to take the blame for it. So, but, you know, and I do want to thank you all sincerely for the lecture in civics. That was great. But in any case, you're right. Town of Stratford does offer a lot of services in a lot of towns around us, though. You know, a lot of people don't collect trash. A lot of people don't have those things that we do have. And I think we, as a town and a town council, have to decide some of the things that we want to actually have. If we really want to cut services and that kind of stuff, those are decisions that the voters have to make, that we have to make, and that kind of stuff. Very difficult to do it in this situation right here. You know, this is not going to happen right here. So I understand, I think the mayor did, and Chris, and you guys did a good job with the municipal budget. You kept it pretty much in line. I do believe that there were things that could be trimmed here and there, but, you know, at this date, it's not really worth it. One of my biggest points, and one of my biggest bones, has been with this increase to the Board of Education. That, your thing here, says it's an $898,000 increase, plus the mayor's, or less than the mayor's, or more than the mayor's, I'm sorry. I've asked several times to get a read on what the budget is, if we went with the mayor's original numbers. And have not been provided with that number, although I've asked at least half a dozen times. What it would be at different rates, so that we could look at this. I'm not for flatlining the budget, the school budget. I don't believe in a zero increase. But what I do believe is that we gave a historic raise to the Board of Education last year. 6.7 percent. That's roughly $9 million. This year, they're looking for roughly another, what is it? $3 million. And I'm using round numbers here, okay? I can't support that. My mother was a teacher for 30 years. I'm more in favor of education than as anybody in this room, okay? But you can't just keep throwing money at it. You know, it's got to keep it in line. If we were to reduce that to an extent, say, next year, let's revisit it, and let's give you more next year, that's fine with me. But with this increase from last year and this year, it's just too much for me to support. That's my biggest bone of contention with this budget. I don't want to see teachers go. I don't want to see services go. But there's got to be some kind of a compromise there.
Mr. Young, I just want to correct you on one thing. To the Board of Ed, to the Board of Education, it's $2.5 million that the mayor had asked for in terms of the increase.
With yours, it was three.
And then if you add in the 427 that you see here on this form, it's another 427. It'd be in addition to that 2.5. So you're right, that's where you get the three.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right. I read the total on the bottom. I'm sorry. You're right. But it's roughly, it's roughly three.
Okay, but they had asked, and they had asked for even more. They had asked for 3.4 percent increase. So they had asked for like...
Which would make it even worse.
Well, just saying, we've come way down.
So that's my, that's my two cents in the whole thing, so, I don't know, Mr. Posner, I'm sorry.
Okay, there being no more comments, I just want to add my few comments. In terms of, I do appreciate all of my fellow counselors looking at these budgets very carefully. And I really do appreciate Mr. Khan, Ms. Antezzo, Ms. Manus, Mr. Kadim, Mr. Farrington Posner, for taking up the challenge to getting us to zero mil rate increase. And I have looked at the different proposals that have come my way, as they have come my way. I just do need to say that some of the things that were in a proposal, it was a proposal as of this morning, it shows to me that you can't really responsibly budget for this town, I hate to say this, without having some sort of tax increase. And I just want to point out a few of the kind of tricks that are done to get us to the zero, that were done. It's underfunding workmen's comp by 150,000. It was not adding in revenues to EMS. It was adding in all of the liabilities, but not adding in that $364,000 of revenues. It's not adding, it's not putting aside the $200,000 that you need to put aside, so when contracts are settled, there's money for it. So right there, and then it's taking $200,000 out of the town attorney's office. And yes, we all want to attack attorneys, and we'd love to be able to reduce, sorry, Chris, reduce their fees and the liabilities. But given the historic trends in this town, it is simply not realistic. So that would get us, those sorts of tricks, which add up to 914,000, which is almost like a, not quite a quarter of a mil, but those, if you take away those tricks, you're, you haven't accomplished the zero mil rate increase. And that's even with underfunding the Board of Education substantially at a level that the superintendent sent down an email this morning and said, if you give us that level, I guarantee you, we will fire 30 teachers, and we will be getting rid of extracurriculars. Now, I know that that adds fuel to the fire, but I'm just saying that for that difference, so, and to respond to Mr. Young, the Board of Ed number, so, you know, we're giving them another 400,000, that's less, well, I guess it's about one-tenth of a mil. So we're really talking about a difference of a tenth of a mil here, because if you take away most of the tricks...
Wait, excuse me?
I'm sorry. If you take away most of the tricks in this proposal, the difference between what the mayor's, I'm sorry, between what the mayor proposed and what the four of us proposed is essentially a tenth of a mil, in terms of the Board of Education budget, on the Board of Education side. Now, you know, and this really does have to do with vision for the town. Do we want a town that has, that's stable, that continues to invest? I do. And I've heard from two important constituents. One is an older woman who lives in Tide Harbor with my mother, and she's a very staunch Republican. And she said to me, she saw me with the budget book going into my mother's condo, and said, oh, you're telling me what our taxes are going to be. I was like, oh, my gosh, yeah, I guess, you know, maybe, I'm one out of 10, but, and she said, well, is there going to be an increase? And I said, well, you know, there's probably some sort of increase. And, you know, her feeling was that a cost of living increase was okay, that what taxpayers don't like is what happened last year, which was the huge increase that they suffered all at once unexpectedly. That was a problem. Cost of living increases, people understand. And she said, the cost of living, that's fine. She said, I want my taxes low. And then she said, but I don't want to live in a dump. So that was one. And then the other person was a gentleman at the gas station yesterday, who I wanted to, you know, he recognized me, and, you know, we started talking about taxes. And his reaction to a tax increase, he said, well, I said, how do you feel about 1.7%? And he's like, what does that mean? And he said, is that over a mil? And I said, no, no, it's, well, less than a mil. He said, well, if it's less than a mil, I'm okay. I said, it's 0.7 mils. And he said, you know, that was okay. And so the feedback that I'm getting in my district is that cost of living is okay. If it's less than cost of living, that's fabulous, and that's where we are. And I'm afraid that's kind of the best, best I can do. So, okay, Ms. Manus.
I'd like to address page 24, of those of you looking at the budget online, with regards to the workman's compensation that was, that was kind of put out there. Workman's compensation, overall, reserve, TPW, fire, police, workman's compensation, admin, all of those budget line items last year were the things that were used in the Harkins proposal when he came out and thought, I was going to do this last year, and I found all money in the little spots and was going to, we can't lose my people. We didn't cut your people. You even have your chief of staff still in the proposal. The idea is, is that we looked at that money. When you look at those line items for 2018, they're proposed $25,000 higher than they were the year before, in 2017. In the prior years, they were actually funded at $50,000 more than they were in 2017. So when 2017 budget came with that historic tax increase, we were robbing the piggy bank last year to do this. Not only were we robbing railroad, and we were robbing all these other things, we were robbing our reserves again. All we're trying to do within this, within this budget proposal, is to go to the same place where the mayor showed last time, that this is, this is a place where we can recover, so that we don't have to cut a person that's working full-time, putting food on the table for their family. If you want me to go through this budget, and I can tell you, Mr. Posner, and Ms. Antezzo, and she's way better at this than me, and she's got some red lines, ladies and gentlemen, we can cut jobs. We can cut jobs. We can slash and burn. We can take people down to half-time for the charter. Economic development, as a department, was not touched, was not even touched. Why? Because we're hoping that as time goes on, that that army engine will be developed, and all of that will go. So we listened. We listened. And we went to the places where we thought we could have a buffer. Now, maybe some of those we disagree with. Hey, that's okay. But those items, those numbers don't lie. And if we start talking about these are tricks, now, the only trick was Beth DePonte walking around in District One, telling people she wouldn't raise their taxes. And now coming back and saying, oh, I did wrong. It's ridiculous. That's the trick. I'm telling you, reality check, this is where we're at. However we get there, we get there as a team. I don't mind talking with people here, 10 district counselors, no problem. I don't mind talking with the public. But we got to get to a number that people can afford. And I'm sorry, talking to somebody at a gas station, and talking to somebody with a multimillion-dollar home, you know, in a place in Lourdes, is not enough. It's just not enough for me. So there are places, there are things we can do. I don't want to cut people's jobs. I don't want to, but if we can't agree that we don't, we want to keep funding all these reserves and all that, and we want to move things, and as far as that, those pieces with the CEP, you move them, and you move something else into bonded. Listen, there's, there's things you can do in this budget. We all know it, okay? And Mr. Yates could come up here and talk for days. All right? So I just want to make sure everybody's looking at the correct information, and just make a decision in your own head.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to call the question.
Is there a second to calling the question?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. Let me get out my trusty pens. Okay. Mr. Farrington Posner.
No.
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 Mr. Khan? Mr. Young?
No.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
And the chair votes yes, the motion fails 6 to 4. Okay? Is there any other amendment?
Excuse me, Madam Chair, can we take a recess? No. Take care of business.
Well, I just first want to see if there are any other amendments, because if not, we'll adjourn. Are there any other amendments to be offered?
There is another amendment, Madam Chair. During the course of our discussions here tonight, I've made some revisions to that amendment, as Mayor Harkins alluded to. I can go over those, using the papers that you were handed earlier today. I can speak to the individual items, or I could go and, we could print fresh items.
Mr. Leclerc.
Well, the town attorneys don't have any of the documents you're talking about, so we would, at a minimum, need that, whatever you're referring to. And you need to have a clean record. I, you know, as I indicated at the last meeting, we can't just have a piece of paper. I think whatever you have may be fine for assistance, but you have to read into the record.
Madam Chair, I second the motion to recess.
Second.
I'm sorry, there was a motion to recess and a second.
That's not, you can't interrupt a speaker, Madam Chairman. I'm speaking. You asked a question of the town attorney. You complained about our fees, but you won't let me speak.
I'm sorry. Please speak, speak and speak loudly, Mr. Leclerc.
You have to, you should be prepared during the recess to keep this meeting moving to, if you want to hand, give us a handout, and the fellow members of the council a handout, that would be of great assistance. But any amendment would have to get read in with specific dollar amounts, both of expenditures and revenues, so we have a clear record of what's being voted on by this body. Just so we can be productive during your recess, should there be a motion.
Thank you. Motion to recess.
The recess will be for 10 minutes.
Aye.
Mr. Leclerc.
The counselors can take their seats, please. Mr. Harden.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn tomorrow, adjourn tomorrow.
No, I thought it was adjourn till, until tomorrow. Correct, Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
It's continuing the meeting tomorrow. You'd like to make a motion to adjourn until tomorrow?
Friday.
Is there a second for that?
I'm not available either.
I give up enough for my kids.
7:30?
I second.
PM.
There's a second.
Roll call.
Mr. Farrington Posner.
No.
No.
Yes.
No.
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 Yes.
No.
Yes, I think the motion failed 7 to 3. I just want to remind counselors that the, that we need to have a budget, May 12, that is Friday. Is there a motion to adjourn till Friday?
I moved to adjourn till Friday.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, seconded?
Excuse me.
Five o'clock on Friday.
Excuse me, you know I'm not available Friday, because I have basketball Thursday and Friday.
I'm sorry, I did not know that. I did not.
Basketball Thursday and Friday. I will not be here from 6 to 9. I have basketball. So if you want it for Friday, you won't have me.
I won't be here either.
We're ready to do it tonight.
I'm ready to do it tonight.
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion.
There's a, you withdrew the second, right?
Yes. I withdraw the second.
Okay, that motion is withdrawn. Okay, is there another amendment? Being none, oh.
Yes, there is another amendment. I'd like to ask the chair for a five-minute recess so the council clerk can print the amendment for the council's attention. In the meantime, Attorney Leclerc has said that we can use the existing amendment and[1738.59]